You have up to three minutes. We have a timer here and it'll flash yellow at one minute. It'll flash red when your three minutes is up and I will ask you to stop speaking even if you're not done so that we can respect the time of everyone else. It's important if you have comments, please direct them to me as council president and not at individual council members. A lot of you are probably here for the first time and when we're in public forum or just speaking in general, we don't do what we just did, which was clap or make noise or wave signs or disturb people in any way during the legislative session. We find that it works better just to not cheer for people or boo for people and try to show people that respect. One thing some council members asked me to emphasize for you all is that when you do come up to the microphone, we are going to ask you to identify yourselves with your name, your city of residence, and if you're here representing some other organization other than yourself, let us know that.
Thank you, council. I thank you that you've clarified that so that the Church of Jesus Christ can stand with me. I'm going to prove to you that the Church of Jesus Christ has no walls. I'm going to ask that you honor the quorum by staying silent, but just lift your hands. Father, we invite you into this place. Holy Spirit, we thank you that you're here with us. For thou, oh Lord, art high above all the earth.
Excuse me? The speaker can sing, but no one else. Thank you.
Thou art exalted far above all gods. I exalt thee.
Excuse me? Just one moment. I'm sorry to have to interrupt you, but really no sound in the audience. That's just our normal rules, so.
I exalt thee. We exalt thee. I love you, Lord, and I lift my voice to worship thee. Oh, my soul, rejoice. Take joy, my king, in what you hear. May we be a sweet, sweet sound in your ears.
Thank you, Mr. Blumgren. And Larry?
I have five beautiful children sitting behind me that are my pride and joy. I also come before you as a postaborted father looks back at my life and the biggest mistake by far is not sticking up for the life of my unborn child. It's not the 1970s, it's not the 1980s, but today we know without a doubt that the baby in the womb is a child, it's not a blob. Jeremiah 1:5 states, "Before I formed you in the womb, I knew you; before you were born, I set you apart. I appointed you as a prophet to the nations." I am here to discuss our freedom of speech that will be voted on today. Matthew 10:22 states, "And you will be hated by all for my name's sake; but he who endures to the end will be saved." TCAP is not going away. The Church is called to be a voice for the voiceless. First, there are laws in the city of Spokane for gathered. Why do we need another? When the chief of police last week was asked whether we are breaking any laws or being unruly?
So this isn't the time to talk about what we're voting on later tonight.
Okay. This new topic that you want to bring up, it's about TCAP. Now, it makes sense when over half of the people up here have taken money from Planned Parenthood, the exact organization where we meet, we pray, we sing, we pray, we talk, we pray more. That really sounds like an out of control group. These people are teachers, doctors, pastors, professors, salesmen, mothers, fathers, kids and retired people. Many of these people do not go to covenant church where Pastor Ken is a pastor. We are Christians from around this city and we join there once a month to assemble. I ask city council tonight, when you light up that screen, you have been voted here and you know what freedom of speech is, and that is nothing that is being broken.
This room. Ronald Raiken said, "I notice everyone who's for abortion has already been born. So no matter how inconvenient a child may be at the time, we must realize that they are a precious gem and deserve life." Thank you.
Thanks for your time.
He said, "We ought to obey God rather than men. When man's laws come into conflict with God's laws and our natural rights guaranteed to us by our Creator, it is not only our right but our duty and our obligation to disobey tyrannical laws."
Thank you, Mr. Kellert Card, and that's a thanks through Mr. Beggs since he is the president. I'm George McGrath. I'm a resident of Spokane and tonight I'd like to speak to you about killing. Now, Planned Parenthood has been around for years. There've been a lot of babies killed, murdered, and God's commandment said, "Thou shalt not kill." He didn't say unless they're inconvenient babies or it's your neighbor and you hate your neighbor. He just said flat out, "Thou shalt not kill." I think that perhaps because of the appreciation of Planned Parenthood in Spokane, we should start running billboards around town, "Welcome to Spokane. We kill babies." See what kind of absolutely great impact that makes on businesses and people who might want to come into Spokane.
I'm Pastor Ken Peters and I'm from Spokane. Mr. Beggs and council. A year and a half ago, a preacher with a cowboy hat gave a sermon at the church I pastor in Spokane. He talked about the plight of the unborn and he said that "The gates of hell," quoting Jesus, "would not prevail against the Church of Jesus Christ." And the Lord gave me an idea in the middle of that church service and the Lord said to me, "Take the church to the gates of hell and just have church." And obviously by what you see here tonight, the gates of hell ain't happy. The very premise of this ordinance is false. We are not there to disrupt Planned Parenthood. We are there to disrupt heaven and call on God to end abortion. Planned Parenthood is way bigger than me, a tiny little pastor in our community, but my God is bigger than them. We are confronting this great evil with worship and prayer and asking our God to move upon this land. We believe that the unborn are the same as a five-year-old and if you believe the same, you'd be right there with us. We are there to worship and pray, intercede, give to women in crisis, preach and make a statement on behalf of the Church of Jesus Christ in Spokane, which is, "Stop killing little kids in our town." We have service once a month at 5:30 and we pick that time only for the convenience of the worshippers not to disrupt their health care. We would gladly change to six if that would make everybody happy. That's not what matters to me. We have always turned the sound down when asked to by the police, but the problem that is said to be the problem is not really the problem. The real problem for those pushing this ordinance is the statement we make by worshiping at Planned Parenthood, which is, "Stop killing little kids in our town." They also say that we harass women. That's an absolute lie. We show up, we worship, we pray, we give and we preach. We do not harass women and if we ever saw it, we would put an end to it immediately. Our goal is to confront abortion in holiness and all the fruit of the Spirit and with spiritual tactics like prayer and worship. This ordinance places a lightning rod over some of the city's best people. This ordinance empowers people that don't like us to treat many great pastors and church folk as if they are criminals for singing. These are taxpayers. They don't drink and drive. They provide foster care. They adopt. They give over 10% of their income to their churches, to missions, to local ministries and they help the poor and the addicted. They would certainly never destroy human life for convenience and money. Instead of the city simply calling me and asking us to be quieter and respectful of the ordinances already in place and state laws, this ordinance--
Thank you, Mr. Peters.
Am I done?
You are. Thank you.
That would be what Planned Parenthood would consider an outside agitator. And the interesting thing about this noise ordinance is the first time I came and spoke for the church at Planned Parenthood, Planned Parenthood actually taunted me for being here. This is not about a noise ordinance. It's about the fact that they cannot stand that we do not want to continue to see this community butcher children. They can call it women's health care, but it's not women's health care at the end of the day. And so when I came to town, they had a big sign, all of the folks will remember up in the window, "Welcome Pastor Greg Locke. We've raised over $1,200 in your name." To them, it was nothing but a publicity stunt. We have 3 million people that follow us on social media and the eyes of the world are watching Spokane tonight. You are making a difference with the decision that you make here in the next few minutes.
Excuse me, Mr. Locke. Can we have order on that? It's not helping any, so please let's just let people finish their talks. So, thank you.
Pastor Peters was asked the other day, "Why don't you just pray at home?" We can pray at home. But in Daniel 16:10, Daniel, when he came before the council and they said, "You can no longer pray and worship in public," when Daniel knew the writing was signed, when the vote was cast, he went into his bedroom and he opened his windows toward Jerusalem and he kneeled upon his knees, he continued to pray. He continued to worship. Listen, we are not going to go away. This is the biggest, most historic crowd you folks have ever had in this room and if you think they're going to lay down and roll over, I'm sorry, you're sadly and sorely mistaken and I have come all the way from Nashville, Tennessee to let you know, the church at Planned Parenthood is a righteous organization. It is not going away at all. At the end of the day, you're going to have to invest in a lot of handcuffs. These people are willing to go to jail because we believe in life and they keep saying, "Well, come back to the sound ordinance. Come back to the noise ordinance." Well, we believe in a noise ordinance. Here's the noise ordinance that we stand up for. Stop killing babies.
Folks? Folks? Look, all right, we'll take-- Listen, this is if--
Please remove the words you have to say.
We're going to roll stop this if you don't give enough quiet. Okay. I've got 10 seconds and then hopefully you'll let this man speak, so please let him.
I'm Caleb Collier from Spokane. I am also a representative of the John Birch Society and the Assistant Director for the Church of Planned Parenthood. Last time I spoke, I spoke last week and I talked about the recusal process and I believe that I laid forth an argument for at least five of you to actually recuse yourself from this ordinance. I got to tell you, I love Spokane. I love this city and I'm really begging you guys to not do this. You guys are potentially setting yourselves up for litigation and it's going to be very costly for this city. We already have the ACLJ, the American Center for Law and Justice. It's Jay Sekulow's organization. He is coming here to defend this and he's on a retainment. He's doing it free of charge for us.
Every hour, they can increase their noise level by 15 dBA. I don't know what that means. I didn't have a chance to study all that because it's new. So they can still yell "Jesus" for one and a half minutes, 15 decibels louder. They can do that one per hour. And they got increased for five, by 10 decibels for five minutes in every one hour. And they can increase their noise by five decibels for 15 minutes in any one hour. So if this is true, there's no underlying changes in the noise level, then they can still protest. They can still legally protest.
That's the end of your time. Thank you actually for that.
Council President, Council Member, George McGrath from Spokane. Now, I kind of got the idea that this entire amended piece of literature was supposed to be about noise, but what I read here has very little to do with noise. It's about blocking ingress and egress and it's about interfering with patients getting treatment and this, that and the other thing. And I would like to say, I was at the TCAPP meeting this past Wednesday evening. Approximately 425 people were there. There was music, I heard words tonight that I would damn sure disagree with. The decibel noise that came out of that group was checked consistently by members of the group. It was not allowed to get over whatever the decibel levels they had decided were and yet tonight we hear, "Oh yes, they were and then we had to call, we had to call, we had to call." Now, hey, let me just say one thing first of all. I am so pleased to see the turnout tonight for those who are opposed to killing babies and the idea that the ones who are not opposed to killing babies are here to support this. Now, to me, if you pass this, it's going to be nothing but bias from the dius. That is all it will be. I don't know why you would pass this ordinance because it's a ridiculous ordinance. We have noise level ordinances that are to protect homeowners, business property owners from undue interference with their enjoyment of their home or their business. That I can see, but this idea of having a small group calling and saying, "Hey, we got to stop, we got to stop, we got to stop those people who are, they're always out there making noises and disturbing us." Hey, if you don't like the sound of a good Christian revival, don't come around because that's what this Wednesday evening was. That's what I expect pretty much all of their meetings are. And the decibel sounds did not reach an offensive level, to my notion, for anybody's ears. And I do wear hearing aids.
Thank you, Mr. McGrath.
My name's Joe Gibson from Battleground, Washington. This ordinance is about one thing, it's about one thing only, it's about the money. That's it. Okay? Planned Parenthood is a multi-billion dollar organization and they make their money by killing babies. That is a fact. And the only way that they can continue to profit off of murdering these babies is if we stay spiritually weak in this country.
Council President--
Do you understand that? This is why Planned Parenthood, Planned Parenthood has invested in this ordinance--
Mr. Gibson, just a moment, just one second. There's been a concern that you--
Can we please stick to the topic of the ordinance?
The ordinance. Can you talk about the ordinance, please?
Yes, the ordinance is how the Planned, multi-billion dollar corporation has bought out politicians here, right here. So that's what I'm going to talk about, okay? Is that okay? Thank you.
No, it's not.
They have, they have invested, they have, they personally put out money, they invested to make sure that we stay spiritually weak in this country--
She's not talking about the ordinance.
--so that Christians don't stand up and fight for the innocent--
People, please--
--and fight for these babies who have lived ripped from their bodies.
Let me, hang on for one second. I want to give you your chance to speak, so hang on for a second. It doesn't, we don't have the hecklers veto here, so if you're upset, I certainly understand it, but it just disturbs it and gives more attention to it. So we're trying to work through this, everyone. I will continue to get people to relate it to the ordinance as best I can and we'll get through this together. But every time we have to do this, it just brings more attention to it. So please, wait your comment. You can give me plenty of feedback afterwards of what I did well or did not do well, but right now let's just try to keep this going. So can you please? Yes?
Council President, something. These mics work really well. These are new, so there's no reason for anyone to yell. So we can hear you. You also don't need to move the mic down close because even if you're height challenged, it'll pick it up. So normal speaking voice is great because when you use a loud voice, we can't hear you at all through the system, so thank you. All right, continue.
This is why Planned Parenthood has invested in this ordinance and pushed and bought out politicians, okay? Because they don't want to, they don't want their profits to be ruined and they're afraid of what TCAP is doing because TCAP is literally motivating people, they're inspiring people and it's going to ruin their profits. Okay? What they're doing is so motivational and it's moved me and it's moving a lot of people. And they're afraid that what they're going to do is they're going to get more people to get up off of the couches and to go out there and to ruin their profits. This is why they put out so much money. They've invested so much money, just like every single big corporation. They buy out the politicians from Washington DC all the way down to here at this city council, okay? Because they want to make sure that they can continue to make their money. That's all it's about, okay? And I want to make this very clear, okay? If you accepted any money from this corporation, you need to recuse yourself from this vote. It is not okay. It is not okay for that conflict of interest. This is the United States of America. A big corporation should not come into any city, any city and be able to influence the Constitution, the First Amendment and the right for us to worship out in the open, out in the open, anywhere on public ground. This is our right. And I want to explain this. God is more powerful than any of you, more powerful than anybody in this room, more powerful than the multi-billion dollar Planned Parenthood and you will not be able to stop them. In fact, if you vote yes on this ordinance, you're going to double, triple, quadruple their numbers. They are going to come out bigger and stronger every single time. I'm begging you guys to do the right thing. Do the right thing. Do not bow down to this multi-billion dollar corporation. Do not bow down to them. Stand up for what is right. Stand up for justice in the name of Jesus Christ. Amen. Thank you.
And as always, please try to talk about the ordinance and the language of the ordinance or what it doesn't say. Thanks.
My name is Chandler Papas. I made the trip here today from Portland, Oregon, namely because I've seen this kind of corruption there before, type to silence these people. I applaud everybody in the audience who stood up, came down to make their plea to a very obviously morally bankrupt council. I want to remind everybody, in section B of their own ordinance is unlawful for a person except as otherwise protected by state or federal law, as otherwise protected by state or federal law, such as the First Amendment. This bill has no place here. It has no place anywhere. Attempting to throttle people and silence and restrict their First Amendment, well, there's a saying, it was brought up earlier tonight, the Second Amendment protects the First, but I think more importantly, people should remember that if you'll take mine, take theirs. I make this appeal not to you, but to the people of Spokane, Washington. Thank you.
I'm opposed to the ordinance. Kennewick just has had two failures of a similar kind of an ordinance. Both times couldn't make it through court. The churches have, in times past when it was pornography, the city council said, "We've got to have pornography be in the fringes and then, and away from churches, protect the churches, away from daycare, away from parks." So, but this is a city that has Bloomsday, this is a city that has Hoop Fest, this is a noisy city. And there are a whole lot more care facilities in this one care facility. Facility means making it easy, your health care. Jesus says forgiveness of sins goes along with healing of diseases. And so we've got to take that into account that the Church of Planned Parenthood is about forgiveness of sins. It's about healing of diseases. It's a health care facility, a health care facility next to another health care facility. Jesus says, "Sing unto the Lord all the earth." It's a command that we are to sing unto the Lord. At the arena, outside of their event, the radio stations often have very noisy music that's not unto the Lord. But when our nation began, each state has a preamble and each state, when they wrote their preamble, they all said, the ones that have a preamble, they all said essentially, "The reason that we're forming this state is to better serve God." And the things that this ordinance is based on is based on that secularism, that's a religion, an irreligion. Secularism, keep God out of it, is assumed to be who has the doctors and who has the expertise. And so there's a presumption, an assumption, a bias that the things of God don't count here and that God can't be a healer. So we need to have that, it says health care facility, health care provider, think of Jesus and think of God's people and that the health care comes by, that Christ Jesus is the one who forgives our sins. Thanks for allowing me to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Wick.
Brothers and sisters, hello. I wouldn't want your job for anything, just so you know. As far as the ordinance goes--
Can you first just tell us your--
J.C. Collier--
Yep.
--Liberty Lake--
Great, thanks.
Okay? Soon, hopefully, to be the state of liberty. There's my position. To give you an idea on the ordinance, it's comical, okay? 1969, you would have found me on the streets of Berkeley as a street preacher. 18 years old, getting knocked to the ground, beat up, kicked, spit upon and having tear gas as a perfume instead of petroleum oil. The radical left in Berkeley was phenomenal, absolutely phenomenal. The city of Berkeley with the most liberal-minded concepts you could possibly have would not vote for this city ordinance that you guys are looking. The most liberal city in America would not pass this. Just something for you to think about, something for you to meditate on. You know, I am now part of an organization that is a worldwide ministry. I'm going to be traveling to locations where we do not have a First Amendment. They don't have it. They have kings, they have dictators, they have rulers that nobody in the city council would want to live under. And where some places we're going to go, we're going to be snuck into to be able to share God's word of love. The people behind me, I think it's cute with them turning their back on you, on us, we still love them. We love them. But when you think about the ordinance, a billion-dollar company going against a thousand-dollar church, that's where it really comes down to. And to give you just a, a lot of people have been passing, you know, scripture along, a lot of things. Oh, I wanted to go before the green. I just wanted to throw this at you, just one thought. If this group was around when Joshua was walking around the walls, they would have protested his sound. Thank you very much for your time. Lord bless you.
Thank you.
Evening, council members. So I'm going to speak and--
Can you tell us what city you're from?
Spokane City.
All right.
So I'm speaking in opposition to this ordinance because it has no meaning because the thing is none of our, I'm a member of TCAP also and I go to Pastor Ken's church for going on five months now and he's, and I don't know why our group is being called "We're white supremacists" and stuff. How is it white supremacists when you got more than one Asian guy and you got people of all kinds of nationality to go to that church? So I'm going to dispute all these label lynching and I want to get to the point about this TCAP, we harassing women getting health care? No, none of that happened. I've been there in every single, except last week, because I was working last night, I mean, working that week, and there, and there was no way they harassed women getting health care. So if they want to electrocute about women's right, health care, let me give you my testimony what happened in North Korea and China. They have what is called one health, one child act policy. If it's not born male, firstborn, they kill it if it's female. So I don't know why you guys want to whine about, "We care about women's, we don't care about women's right." Well, there you go in China. They don't treat women right in China. They kill Chinese women baby because in China it's one policy act. And I also want to dispute the TCAP, we were never allowed. All, we worship at a low volume and we never block traffic or anything, so I'm going to dispute every one of these false claim about them. So that's all I have to say.
Thank you, Mr.--
So I've spoken up here several times and I've just been listening to all these people talk and I go to this Church of Planned Parenthood and it's, it's pretty an interesting experience, you know, seeing a couple hundred Christians get out there and peacefully say some prayers and some people get up there and speak. Well, on Wednesday, last Wednesday, they had a Church of Planned Parenthood and I was there. I didn't witness nobody blocking-- I didn't witness nobody blocking sidewalks. I didn't, I mean, this is all just fabricated lies, what I've heard, like the person before. I mean, this is just nonsense. And because I go there, I've been, I'm not going to bring up myself. It's pretty disgusting what's happening to me, but I'll take care of it. But you guys have let this happen, and you, Brian Beggs, you know what I'm talking about. This, this right here, this, this stack of papers. I come here and I get attacked, and you do nothing about it, and you know about it. But like I said, I've already told you guys, I'm a veteran, and I, I don't believe in killing babies. I don't believe in, that's my right. I have every right to go and peacefully worship. And just to let you know, I'm not going to mention the name, but about 6 o'clock, there was people up in Planned Parenthood watching us. And so they're being disturbed. I suggest, maybe you haven't, I've heard Ms. Kinnear said she's been there, but maybe you guys might want to come there and actually see what happens before trying to pass some ordinance. And also, I wonder, is this really about noise ordinance? Or is it because there's like 300, 400 Christians up there, you know, peacefully praying and, you know? Because if they change it to 6 o'clock, which I think, you know, might be a good thing, what are they going to do then? Are they still going to get up here? Are you guys still gonna try to shut down their free speech or our free speech? But that's something I fought for. You know, I served my country honorably, and I mean, it's just sick. You know, you guys are elected here, and I mean, I don't, I don't know why you'd be trying to silence people. Like, that's disgusting. And you, you used to be my friend, and I don't understa- I'm done.
Okay.
And it worries me that tonight, before I came in, I, I had an email from the gentleman that showed me the, just a second. I got time here. I get an email that somebody shared with me from Mr. Locke, who, his message is, "Spokane, my plane just took off. Be there soon. Things are about to get real." Using flames. And I'm sitting here thinking, that was scary to me, and to come into this room-
Please, please order-
To come into this room with people on totally opposite sides of the issue that care very much about where they stand, and they're not able to stop long enough to listen and to understand, to have some compassion, forgiveness. It scares me because somebody's going to get hurt, and that's not what this should be about, and I'm sorry to see that happen. I'm going to support this noise ordinance because it's about noise. It's not about your right, and it's not about money, sir. You can, you can do and say whatever you want. If, if you really were a true Christian and you cared about people, you would have that conversation with me. You could call and we could talk about that.
People, please-
What I'm saying is, somebody is going to get hurt in all of this, and that makes me nervous.
Millions of babies are all in danger.
All right, so if that's true, then this ordinance shouldn't affect you. Because if you're following the law and you're really not interfering or not creating a public disturbance, wherever you are, could be at the grocery store, then this ordinance isn't going to affect you. And so it's our job to make sure we're going to protect our city and our citizens, and that's why I'm going to support this. I supported the driveway ordinance. In fact, I was the sponsor several months, several years ago for the same reason, is we are a civil society and we have to treat each other how we want to be treated, so I'll support this.
Mr. Cathcart's right. This is not about, Planned Parenthood has not been mentioned in this. TCAP has not been mentioned in this ordinance. This ordinance is not about silencing anyone's right to assembly, speech, or protest. It's about protecting your right to receive healthcare services free from harassment. The noise ordinance makes sure the statewide priority of healthcare access is present in our city code. This incorporation of state law into our city code allows law enforcement to more swiftly and effectively act to preserve your right to healthcare.